Welcome everybody to our special meeting and should be our last meeting of 2023. No promises, but should be our last meeting of 2023.
Good day to all.
I will.
The 2023.
I will call the meeting to order now.
And I will call the junta.
Kenya, we haven't started the Spanish interpretation yet, so I'll start that after I provide instructions.
Mr. Clerk, could you? I've called the meeting to order, could you tell us about the translation services and take a roll call?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the public, live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom, please click the interpretation globe icon in your Zoom meeting webinar controls and select the Spanish language. Kenya or Kim, could you provide the instructions in Spanish?
That's okay, I'll do it. Buenas tardes, todos. Queremos recordarles que esta reunión, esta junta, la estaremos dando con interpretación en vivo. Si ustedes están accediendo a esta reunión por medio de Zoom, se pueden hacer clic en la parte inferior de su pantalla donde verán un icono de un globo en la barra de herramientas y seleccionar el idioma español, hacer clic y seleccionar español. Muchas gracias y pasen buenas noches.
Thank you, I started the Spanish interpretation now, I'll take the roll call. Commissioner Lu. Absent. Commissioner Amaya Nori. Commissioner Huber Levy. Commissioner Ogobal.
Present.
Commissioner Bookenegger. Absent. Commissioner Ginevra. Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Montani. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sathil Nouri. Is absent, Commissioner Bookenegger is now present. Commissioner Rasmussen.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Singh. Absent. Commissioner Swob.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Ohila Hotel.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Thank you, and then Chair Monroe LaBuis.
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 I am present.
Thank you. Court absent.
So we have a court, great, thank you. Alright commissioners, we are here primarily to consider the inspection report on the Youth Services Center. And, and I also added a couple of items to the agenda, just to have some time, just to look forward to January, maybe make some announcements about what we might be doing in January around planning and membership. So I would entertain an motion.
We accept the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Swob.
I second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Huber Levy. Any discussion, any changes, any edits to the agenda? Okay, hearing not all in favor of accepting the agenda as distributed, say hi.
Hi.
People's, the extensions, great. We have, we have our agenda. Moving on then, I will turn it over to Commissioner Rasmussen to present to us the Youth Services Center inspection.
Thank you, and I see that Chief King has joined us as well.
Yep. Thank you, Chief King, welcome.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, so this year's report is quite comprehensive, 129 pages and attachments. We're to my next slide, so the first thing I wanted to talk about is where does our data come from? In this document, where did we get the information that's in it? And so, the documentation and statistics were provided to us by the probation department. That includes the administration, that includes the assistant deputy chief and the analyst team. We interviewed institution staff and supervisors, we interviewed youths and their families, we interviewed BHRs, we interviewed correctional health, and we received some information from BSCC. So that is what the basis of where the information in this report comes from. Statistics for this past year, so our inspection period runs from August 1st to July 31st. And for this period, we had 270 bookings, we had 149 of those that were youths who were entering the system for the very first time. So a little more than half are first time entries into the system. The average daily population was 21 males and two females, the average length of stay was 25 days. Out of county youth, this is very interesting, out of county youth, out of the 270, 61 were out of county youth. So out of county youth actually account for a little over 22% of our bookings overall. The average age was 16 and a half, and that's a year older than last year, but I think being that some of our long-term kids have been there the whole entire time for this next year, then raise, I think that's accounts for that. Race, 95.5% of the kids were youth of color. And that's broken down to 75% Hispanic, 11% Black, 5.5% White, 3.7 Pacific Islander, American Native American, 1.8%. Asian was the same, and also other and unknown were less than 1%. So that data has pretty much stayed the same as it was last year. There was a change in the city of residents, last year if you remember, it was Redwood City was number one, followed by San Mateo, East Palo Alto and San Bruno were tied for third. And so this, this year we've got some change, San Mateo took the top spot, followed by Redwood City, East Palo Alto remained in third, and South San Francisco and Daly City rejoined the list this year. Electronic monitoring, lot of action on this front this year with electronic monitor. We had 94 participants, all of them were San Mateo County residents. It was explained to me that our policy prior to the new law taking effect, which will take effect in January, I believe, that we weren't offering EMP services to out-of-county youth. Some parents had the option to hire a private company to, and they could pay for those services, but many of our families can't afford that, even on a sliding scale, it was like $50 a day. So this electronic monitoring providing it for out-of-county use was actually something that we've been recommending for the past two years. And so I was thrilled when, when Ron went to and worked with Senator Becker to get this law passed. So now every county must, must offer EMP services to out-of-county youth. So the average length of time a child spends on EMP is 69 days, and 86 of the 94 were first-time placements. Our 2022 recommendations, so what was implemented from our last report was court-ordered online victim impact classes, project, the Project Change College Program. The, the department partnered with the Art Commission and did a poetry out loud event, which was very successful. They did cultural celebrations, they updated the Youth and Parent Handbook in Spanish, and the de-escalation room is actually opened now during this inspection period, it was pending. They've identified a mental health space, it still needs to be therapeutically designed, but we, they've identified a space, and wall shells have been ordered for each cell, and correctional health tells me that they will be moving to an electronic medical records system in 2024. So all that's happening, so that's good news. See. Okay. 2023 recommendations, so our main recommendations this year are to implement comprehensive substance abuse treatment, to provide additional support for our college students, offer or implement programming for our long-term and secure track youth, to actually implement the Youth Bill of Rights. We are still working to get the hygiene products, the ethnically appropriate hygiene products, and that is also listed in the Youth Bill of Rights, so that's something that's been on our recommendations for three years. And again, something that was passed with the legislature, so we're actually on point with a lot of our recommendations. To provide some career technical education and vocational programs, the children's clothing is worn now, it's spraying, it's, there's holes, it's just, I don't know how old it is, but it, it's sort of run the end of their useful life, what they have there now. So new clothing is certainly needed, and adequate footwear, we're still working with the same shoes that wear out very quickly, that cause problems with the feet, I actually had one parent report that your child actually broke their foot and attributed it to the shoe. So I, we are also recommending that we implement a pay-for-service model for service providers, acknowledging that we probably are not going to go back to a time where we have 100 or more than 100 children in the hall. So we need to look at how we are putting out RFPs and our contracts that we're, we're making. So a pay per service, especially for our secure track youth who, we're anticipating that population to go up to maybe even a half a dozen this year. A pay-for-service would, would make much more sense than just gathering a block and doing it that way. We'd also like to see the numbers for the Juvenile Justice Realignment Block Grant funding, to know how much money is left, what's been spent, where's it been spent, and what our options are, what we can advocate for, what's needed. Right now, without any data, it's really hard to know, okay, what can we do to advocate for these programs and services without having that information? And also to create a section, the library for law library, and to have some basic legal books on the housing units for the kids. Also, recommendations the same as Camp Kemp as far as our food and nutrition, that we presented this last month. These, this data was provided to us by the Probations Department analyst team, and these numbers came from them, I didn't have to break them down in any way, they gave me these numbers. If you remember, we do not have a cost for dinner, we just have the cost for breakfast and lunch. And so the annual budget for, or the actual cost of food group services last year was one, over 1.7 million, and the breakdown is at a cost of $89.94 per meal. And then I included in the report, you'll see the breakdown of what the actual cost is. And we did meet with the dietary staff down at the Sheriff's Department to get some more information so we could be educated on what, what this means and how they do think. So, training recommendations, so one of the things that repeatedly came up when I was interviewing staff is that they were requesting specific training. And so these training recommendations are based on what the staff has requested, what BHRs feels the staff would benefit from, and then what the kids and the parents feel that, that the staff needs to be trained on. So these aren't, we're certainly not experts in that area, but when the employees tell us we'd like to have this training, we include it here. So the types of training would be on the Youth Bill of Rights, I think it was overall in talking with staff and supervisors, there was a lot of disconnect on what the Youth Bill of Rights entailed and when it became effective, I know OICR is having trouble gathering posters and getting the, you know, pamphlets and things ready. So I think they were kind of under the impression that they were just waiting for that documentation to come through. But really, it's in effect now, and OICR on their website has some guidance on it. So I think providing some training would be helpful, and I also think we need to educate our children on the Youth Bill of Rights and the families as well, this is a topic that's been brought up in our family support group, just so they know, because there's been many changes, there was changes in who can visit, whom you could make a telephone call with. You know, even the hygiene products are in there now, so this is, there's some significant rights in there that everyone should be aware of. There was also some discrepancy as far as on secure track and what that programming or what that individual programming would look like. So having some training on that would be beneficial for staff. One of the things that has come up is the youth educational rights, and the kids have been having trouble accessing, we spoke about this during the education inspection, they've been having trouble accessing computers, they've been, with the software is an issue, but they've also, we had one child who was, who was told that they would have to un-enroll from all of their classes as a punishment, and so that certainly can't happen. So additional training to just, so they, so staff understands that this, that an education is really not a privilege, right? We really want that.
The secure track youth was told that they.
It was a long, a long-term.
A long-term who's in college?
Yes.
Melissa, I think we actually spoke to this person.
Yeah, so, so that, and, and then also when kids repeatedly ask staff to, for access to the computers to be written up or lose points for staff manipulation, for asking more than one staff to do their homework or assignments. So I just think if there was a little bit more training, everyone would be on the same page and understand, you know, what we can do, what we can't do, and how best to serve the kids. Because I think everyone agrees that we want the kids to be educated, and they will not be able to obtain a degree in the time that they are there if they're only allowed to take one or two classes at a time. We really need to be able, you know, to have them take, you know, three or four classes at a time, especially for our kids who will be there for a significant amount of time. Mental health and substance abuse training, teen mental health, every staff member said they'd like to be trained, have more trained on that. Mental health, first aid, effective communication, and identifying drug dependency and withdrawals. This year was the first year that I saw where we actually had youths who were withdrawing from fentanyl in the facility. And, you know, they had to be hospitalized, there's a whole opioid protocol and withdrawal protocol. So having additional training on that would be helpful. Trauma-informed care in adverse childhood experiences was another issue that staff requested training for. Trauma-informed practices and impacts of trauma and abuse. And then the master training log, this was something that was also mentioned at camp, during the Camp Kemp inspection. And the master training log would be helpful to document all training, you know, when and where the, the training took place and who put on the training and whether or not they were certified, or if that was applicable, if they received a certificate or not. Then I think it would be clear on who's been trained, when they've been trained, and so if they were to say, yeah, I wasn't trained, well, then there's a log saying, wait, you did do that training.
I was surprised that there isn't a log, and maybe Chief King can tell us the status of that.
Okay, after I'm done with your data.
I would suggest, yeah, we wait until we get to.
My, and then the maintenance and repairs, the carpets in the housing units, the last three years we asked for them to be replaced. I understand we were in a pandemic, but they're really soiled. And it was my understanding when I was talking to the new superintendent that they were looking at replacements, they are beyond where you can't just clean them anymore, they, they really do need to be replaced. And then inspecting the gutters, that's a high fire area there, we're also, we are also moving into winter season. So just our public works come out and check these gutters, clean them out. There were some lockers in the lobby of the juvenile hall that need repair, some painting on the housing units. The vacuums on the housing units aren't working properly, so staff has requested a new vacuum for each housing unit. And parents and kids have said that when they're talking on the phone on the housing unit, there's often echoes and static, and it's difficult to hear and have a conversation. So that was where the recommendation came from for the, for the new phones. So I'd also like to point out, one of the things we do when we do our annual inspections, we try to find the people and things that are really making a difference in the system. And so I'd like to recognize the following individuals who went above and beyond during this inspection period to meet the needs of our kids to implement new programs and to just overall just consistently doing their very best to treat our kids. So that would be group supervisors Tina Deng, Alexander Mahia, Thomas Mitchell, Rahim Owens, Ms. Sharma, Eric Stewart, Institutional Services Manager Yvonne Bustos, she's the one who put together the poetry out loud. And one of our students, I think he came in third, right? So that was huge, they all dressed in their outfits and their ties and their slacks, and they read poetry, and it was really remarkable.
Is it their poetry, or they choose?
I think they chose, they chose the poetry, and one of our recommendations from last year was to partner with the Arts Commission to do these exact things, and so look what came of it, and it was, it was a beautiful thing to witness, and, oops. And so I just wanted to acknowledge her for that. The members of the staff at school, John, the kids call him Beechey, I'm gonna say his wrong, Boarda Gary, I think that's why they call him Beechey. He's been there as long, my daughter, when she was there, she's 36 now, it's a long, he's been there, so he goes above and beyond, and of course Lawrence needs, she goes out of her way to get these kids hooked up with college. I've been, I've been in the community, in meetings with superintendents with her. She really goes above and beyond to make sure that kids can go back to their home schools and that they're getting the programming that they need. And lastly, Nurse Pam, Nurse Pam did an outstanding campaign for kids this year on teen health, and it included everything from, you know, personal hygiene to STDs, to, you know, acne, to vaping, to, you know, she really did an outstanding job, she had these big posters made, like she handmade them. And it was really successful, so I wanted to acknowledge her for that. So those are the highlights, this is a really comprehensive document, and for those who've probably seen it in the last week, it's changed somewhat. And so that is the end of my presentation, I'll stop sharing my screen. And I'm happy to take any questions, I don't, I see, Melissa, did you want to?
Yeah, I have, I have a number of questions.
Why don't we give everybody a chance to roll around?
Well, I have a general comment, which is when you're, when you say that, for example, the Zoom policy is different this year, or that, or acting in a different way, or the telephone policy, it would be very helpful to say what it was and what it is as a way to document it, because I don't know what that means, and I want to know if I read the report. So there's, so examples, you talk about the MP3 policy.
Yes.
I don't know if it's attached, I haven't gone there in my reading.
No, I, I wasn't able to get a copy of it.
Okay. The same on the Zoom and the telephone? Um, sorry. Let's see, strip searches have not been conducted at the facility for a considerable amount of time, so just like, how long has that been?
Like, just so it wasn't during this inspection period?
At no point in the last year has a strip search been conducted.
That is the information that I've received, that there's been no strip searches in this inspection period.
Be specific to that, I don't have that question.
Okay.
Weekly visiting time was reduced during this inspection period, so what was it? What is it? Telephone policy needs to be updated to reflect the changes in the law, what was it? What is it? That was, let's see, oh, daily large muscle activity programming. I just, you said that PE had been taking its place instead of it being offered, and I'll ask Chief King to address that when it's time, but I wanted to know what the status is right now, whether that was still active or whether it was passed.
Do you want me to answer? Okay, so it's my understanding that they are no longer substituting large muscle exercise for the PE class, but that, that was something that happened for a period of time during the inspection, so that's why it was reported. I believe the telephone policy and the Zoom policy was in the attachments, but I will check to see. It's very, it's been difficult to sort of narrow down the changes that have taken place as far as what is allowed with the visiting times and the telephone times. There's court orders that allow children to call every day, so that's off policy. There's court orders that allow them to have 20-minute phone calls and not 10-minute phone calls. So there's a lot of factors that play there than to just say one policy for, you know, so it's kind of hard to narrow that down.
Do you have any other questions?
Maybe. Somebody else.
Why don't we go around? Man?
Yeah, I didn't have any questions.
Yeah.
Mr. Huber Levy?
Oh, sure, I had a couple of questions, and I thought it'd be interesting for others to understand it as well. The recommending option for moving to a pay-per-service model? Is this a model that you have something in mind or something that was discussed? Or is it like a hypothetical?
Yeah, well, it's been discussed in different, in different spaces, and I know it even came up. Chief Manheimer mentioned it at the JJC meeting as well. Because the population is so low, we have to start looking at different ways to provide services. And so people are looking at, okay, if you provide this service to this youth, it will be this much for this amount of time, really personalizing it. So that's kind of, I think there's a lot of agencies that are looking to sort of move that way, because it, it's just not functioning. Like, we've heard from probation, two years in a row saying, I can't even get folks to fill out an RFP to, because we don't have enough.
So there's a sense that the agencies would actually welcome this?
Yeah, it would, it would need it to be a whole new structure. I'm not an expert, maybe the chief could, could elaborate on what, what that would involve. I'm sure it'd be a much higher, you know, per child, you know, fee, but.
That would, that would be perhaps balanced by the flexibility and targeted use, so you wouldn't have to enter into a contract where it wasn't being fully utilized. It might be per youth more expensive, but overall.
Right, a good example is, and I don't think this costs anything, but they, they implemented alcohol anonymous meetings during this inspection period, they came back, and they're mandatory on the, one of the long-term units. And the kids said, well, I've been asking to get permission not to do it because I want to do my homework instead, and they don't have an alcohol program, a problem, or issues, like, I don't, that's not my problem. But if they did narcotics anonymous, I'd really like that, like, I, I smoke weed, I use drugs, like, that would be helpful to me. So, and those are the kind of things, so when you have, you know, maybe the alcohol doesn't apply to everyone, maybe the narcotics one is done, so.
So could you look at menu of services that's. Thank you. I also had a question about the application of the law, and our recommendation is for the probation department suspending policies, protocols, or practices prohibit the out-of-county youths from receiving a recommendation for release on youth. My understanding, which is not a fully informed understanding, but was that the court makes the decision? And now that SB 448 prohibits the court from making that decision without.
Well, the court makes the decision, but probation writes the recommendation. So if they don't get, the judge doesn't have the recommendation before her for EMP, then how can she rule that, you know, for EMP? But she doesn't, it's not an option, right?
So you're suggesting that they.
That it become an option, that it, if the child lived in.
It's not an option, if.
Right, so when, in the, in the recommendation, in the court reports, they'll put what they feel would, would, you know, is best for the child, in the best interest of the child, if they should stay, go home on EMP, or if they don't need EMP. So in, in this case, it would be, the judge gets the full report with the option. We didn't have the option of offering kids EMP for out-of-county, because our probation department didn't monitor kids from out of county. So it was off the table. So if you lived in San Francisco, you would stay incarcerated, we have one child who stayed incarcerated for three months because the families couldn't afford the $50 a day sliding scale for the services. I worked at the Agatha, I've had youths in San Francisco, like, how can we have some sort of reciprocal agreement? So we'll take yours, you take ours, like, just do something, let's get these kids out of custody. And they said, Joanna, we all have, we all just take care of it, your county is one of the only ones that doesn't. And I was like, oh, okay, I didn't realize that, thank you for that information. So I think that, that that request was, that recommendation was based on knowing that the law will be changing soon. If we were to, if we were to have any out-of. If we were to, if we were to have any out-of-county kids who would otherwise be eligible for EMP, sitting in the hall, could we please change that now, change the policy now, so they could be released and don't have to wait till January first?
I see, okay, yeah, okay, got it, that's great.
That's okay for now, I'll share my space. Thank you. Okay, so, um, I noticed on I've known some two different places, but if, there was something about the sleep rules and you checked out, but then it also said that rules need to be updated to include the Youth Bill of Rights, do the youth get the, the Youth Bill of Rights at any point?
Uh, they, so, um, I gave the long-term youth a copy of the OYCR Youth Bill of Rights, um, and I gave a copy to staff. Um, but no, they really should be given a, a copy so they know what the, what the, their rights are. One of the things we want to teach them, right, is how to advocate for themselves in a really responsible and appropriate way. Right, so educating them on their rights and then them advocating for themselves is a really healthy thing for them to do. Yeah, so they really need to be provided with that information. For, and it's, it really needs to come from probation, in my opinion, because then they're all on the same page, right? They, they presented it, they know how they presented it, they can answer their own questions. So I'm hopeful that that will happen.
Like an updated orientation manual or something?
There's no mention of it anywhere.
It's, staffs have, they put it like in each unit, but I don't think they've given each individual, individually, a copy of it.
And when we were there on inspection, the one I had given was taken down.
Just had a question related to that.
Yeah, that's.
I was just wondering if FLY provides
That'd be real nice.
Some counseling to kids on their legal rights and advocating for themselves and that seems real.
Yeah, very appropriate in their law, their contract gives law, they only have like a law program.
Yeah, they have a law program.
So Deborah Alhider is a volunteer, so I know that the Youth Bill of Rights is being handed out under Deborah's watch.
Okay.
But that's not a formal, uh, so I think she's probably talked to FLY, so it'd just be something.
They're obviously aware of it.
Yeah, I talked to Keat about it as well.
Oh, you did?
But I, yeah, um, but I, you know, she has to decide what they're going to do. That was when the law first passed, I spoke to her about it, if she could get it going in the program. This is important for many reasons, the Bill of Rights, mainly for the visiting and the phone calls, because it allows them the opportunity to visit and talk with folks that normally they wouldn't, wouldn't have been able to do. Let's say, let's say they, uh, they don't, they raised by a single mom and let's say there's a neighbor in the neighborhood, that's really a good role model. Let's watch the child grow up, who's there for them, tries to help the mom, whatever. But under the old rules, unless they were, um, approved by the probation department, um, they weren't naturally just able to come and visit, even though they were, had played a significant role in the child's life, because they weren't a parent or a guardian, right, or someone who's court-ordered to be there. So Youth Bill of Rights opens that up, so if you are a positive role model, or you play a, have a significant role in a child's life, you can come and visit, of course, barring that you're not on probation or have any other issues such as that, but, but it really opens things up, it, it opens their world. Because a lot of these kids, they don't have the traditional support systems, but we all can take our breath.
Um, I was wondering about the dual system youth, is that, I just want to make sure I understood that that's youth that, uh, who are both incarcerated and foster care youth?
Yes, they're in both systems.
Okay, so, were you able to get any more information about the dual system youth and the disabled youth, like the numbers? I'm, I'm sure it might just be private information, maybe that wasn't available, but I was just wondering if you were able to?
Yeah, it was, um, it wasn't something that was, um, being kept, but every year Tony Burchan's works would be on all the data. He's excellent, and he'll just say, okay, you know, any stacks of data, so. Um, so I think as we move forward, we, we're expanding that data, right? As something comes up, we find, you know, this past year, we had a lot of kids who were incompetent, right? And so that opens up the question.
Just to clarify, they were ruled as incompetent by the court.
Yes, and so that opens up to the question of, oh, how are we identifying cognitive disabilities, right? So that's where that, so a lot of times these things come up as things are unfolding, yeah.
Yeah. And, um, I'll just ask one more, one more question, is there any other questions? Um, about the program for the youth that go to court, um, and giving them clothing?
Yeah.
Um, I was wondering, one, is it only for boys, and then also, uh, when are you collecting?
Well, I'm always collecting and it's for everyone, right, it's for everyone. I do have some suits and skirts, um, for, for young ladies, or even, uh, some very neutral clothing for non-binary kids and so, um, and I'm always collecting and, um, always on the lookout for, for clothes for that. Um, the best part about that program is, one, they get to change out of the clothes that could be in court and and it's their self-esteem and, right? A lot of them are learning how to tie a tie for the first time, a lot of them have never had nice clothes. But then they take those clothes when they leave and they now have an outfit for homecoming. They have an outfit for a formal event, if there's a funeral, if there's a wedding, if there's a job, an interview for something, they're ready. They have it, next thing you're taking like a situation that may not have, you know, maybe was complicated, but now you're giving them a tool when you leave.
I've been asking my friends already.
Oh, good, thank you, thank you.
In preparation for this question.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll help fill it up.
Thank you.
That's all my questions for now, you did a lot of work, oh, you did a lot of workups.
Yeah, so did the man, we had, it was like three visits and it was, it was a lot. Things were in flux the whole time, because one visit, we had two housing units open, the next visit, we had one housing unit open, so. It was hard to compile, nothing was really the same, you know, so lots of changes.
Um, I was thinking, I would like to see the educational handbook from the County Office of Education. And I think I've seen the Youth Bill of Rights, but I'm not sure that I've seen this one in the youth parent handbook. I, I would like to be familiar with those, if we could somehow get copies of them.
Yeah.
And my impression was on, um, the AA and NA, you were saying that the NA is more appropriate for this group of, of young people than the AA?
That's what they, that's what they expressed.
Okay, and?
And there's no narcotics anonymous?
Not at this time, yeah, unless it's been implemented in the last, uh, maybe three weeks.
Wouldn't those two programs be pretty similar? They're both gonna be twelve-step programs.
Okay, I would think so, um, but maybe what they were telling me is, like, the same person comes and tells the same story and it's really not relevant to me, it's like the redundancy part, and then it's alcohol-related and not so much drug-related.
And their problem is drugs, not alcohol.
Yeah, and they are on some pretty serious drugs, I mean, Zen and Fentanyl, methamphetamine, MDMA, I mean, some serious drugs.
Yeah, I, I remember one young woman who tried over and over again to get off meth and she said, I just can't, I can't do it.
Yeah, we really need to get something in place for them, there's not a single bed in the entire county for inpatient substance abuse treatment. It's a shame.
For youth.
For youth, yeah, I don't know if there is for adults, but is there?
It's pretty.
We have, I mean, we have children actively addicted to Fentanyl and we have to do something about it.
No, well, and on the law library, um, I, I agree that this is something that is advisable. I just don't know how feasible it is, because I, we would have to figure out the cost and the cost of law books is huge.
I've been supplying them, like five hundred dollars a year for the set, right, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because the kids asked me, Ms. Johanna, what does this mean on my paper, you know, what does this mean?
So they have it?
So I, well, I brought, you know, I brought them the set, but there's other things that they need, like legal research. I can't buy them every year, hopefully somebody else, you know, hopefully they could, right, San Francisco, they have a beautiful law library. They've got, they've got magazines and newspapers and, I mean, their library is top-notch.
In the juvenile hall.
In the juvenile hall, so I wonder if we might get the library, or maybe even the bar association involved, to help contribute some books.
Willing to go talk to the librarian in Redwood City?
Yeah.
And see if there, he could get something going from the county, all the, the county library system.
Exactly, it doesn't have to be like, you know, they're in law school, it's just enough so they can understand what happened.
Look up what is affecting them.
Right, immigration and what their current charges are.
The librarian there is a volunteer, so she could probably use some, no, no.
Okay.
That's, that's as far as I got.
Okay.
Um, just kind of a general question, outside of your, like, in-person inspections, do the youth have, uh, the opportunity to, like, file a grievance or a concern at any time that either goes to the commission or someone else who can act on it?
Uh, they don't have the ability to reach out directly to the commission, other than when we're there on their, our, our monthly visit. They don't really have the capacity, although under the Youth Bill of Rights, they can. Um, but as of now, they really don't have that capacity. But they do have an internal grievance process, but I must say, the superintendent does an excellent job at, the new superintendent handling it. Um, so that youth, all of them were, were aware that of the grievance process, most of them had used it, some didn't know, some were once in know the ins and outs of it, but the forms are readily available throughout the facility. There's a process, every grievance is kept in a binder and then it shows, you know, the, the steps, the outcomes, and whether or not there was appeal and what happened. And, um, this year, uh, I mean, this year, the trend seemed to be that there was a lot of them overturned. A lot of grievances were overturned and there was a, you know, where there was a mutually agreed upon, on solution, so. And they even said that they.
Oh, sorry, overturned means like?
See someone, yeah, let's, no, I mean overturned, so, meaning that, let's say you've lost points because you did X, Y, and Z. You file a grievance, I shouldn't have lost my points. So then they, then the supervisor says reinstate the points, so that's what I mean, overturned.
Well, not that the grievance was overturned, but the subject matter of the.
Right, so it's, basically the grievance.
Yeah, allowed them to, if it was that.
Because, yeah, but they still keep it to show the, everything that went on.
You have access to that file yet?
It's part of the inspections required that we go through the book and look at it and see what the grievance is for. Um, you know, most of the, most of the complaints that we were hearing about had to do with, um, school. That these kids wanted school so badly and, uh, they were just like, I need access, I had a midterm and I couldn't get to it, or um, I can't study and, I mean, they, they're really, for the first time in their lives, for some of them, are really invested in their school and they're excited about it and it's, I mean, it's really remarkable to see, and so they really, um, are wanting more access and I, I have to say that a lot of things happen quickly, with the changes of the laws and with the implementation of secure traffic, closing DJJ and COVID, right, a lot of things happen, so I think, like, we're trying to catch up. Our neighbors in San Francisco and Santa Clara have been to see both of those facilities and they're much further along. I mean, San Francisco, um, when I was there, uh, yesterday, I think they had twenty-seven kids. So their, their populations are similar to ours, I mean, the whole facility, so they, they have a few more, um, uh, youth, uh, I mean, uh, secure track kids, but the, the, the other counties are just a little bit more, so. I think that the fact that we don't have a lot in place, um, causes a lot of, um, you know, um, inconsistency and people don't really know what we're, they're supposed to be doing, because it's not in place yet. Like, a question came up with a staff member, like, now that our kids can be there till they're twenty-five, and what if they want to get married? Can they get married? Like, nobody knows, can they get married, like?
Right.
Legally, they should be able to get, if they were in prison, they would be able to get, like.
Wow.
So these are all questions that we've never thought of, because we are not in this spot, so it's changing.
Yeah.
They also have access to the ombudsman's, just so you know.
And there are posters in the facility, there's posters out.
OYCR ombudsman.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and there's posters about that and there's also the prison rape elimination hotline that's open. I don't know that, that the kids have to ask staff to use the phone, so that staff would know that they're calling to make a complaint, so. It's kind of, that's something we gotta work around.
But the grievance process, they can do that anonymously?
It's a form that you would put into.
Well, no, I, I mean, I don't, I haven't seen an anonymous one, I'm sure it's possible, but I, I can't speak on it. Because they have to address it, right, like, usually the kids want to address it, so how would they know to address it?
Situation, okay, and then I'm also not sure if this is relevant towards the age group of this facility, but for, like, much younger kids who, or people who just have lower, like, literacy levels, um, if it's like how they're able to write their grievances, or so if they're unable to write it, like, if there's a person they could talk to, um, because I, you guys are obviously not always there.
Of course, yeah.
So.
And the kids that were ruled incompetent.
What does that mean?
It just means that you don't have the intellectual capacity to, to be held accountable for your actions, so.
Okay.
Like, you're, you, you either have a, immature, your age, you have an cognitive disability, something that.
Yeah, so do they have a way to file a grievance?
Uh, that is a very good point.
Maybe if there's like a professional in that, or like a therapist or something like that, who might be able to answer that matter? I, I believe reading in this youth handbook, that they can ask the staff member to file a grievance on their behalf, I believe.
Okay.
I believe that that's written.
They're very good about grievances, it's not like, it's very open, it's very transparent and there, there's a lot of action on it. So they're taken seriously and some of the kids have said, I can put on my grievance form and I want to talk to the superintendent and she'll come down and talk to me. And I think that's fantastic, they're building a relationship and trust, so I think.
Yeah, so there should be, there should be, what other, what other counties, or Santa Clara County, there's something called the red phone. You, it's in the medical department and you can say, I need to see medical, and instead pick up the red phone to report rape or assault or contact OYCR, et cetera. So that, that's how they handle anonymous reporting or grievances.
Is there a live person on the other side, or is it just?
Person on the other side, yeah, and it, so it's going to an outside agency, yeah.
So, that's good information, so I will jot down, um, to find out about what's offered to our intellectually disabled youth. Um, and then I, I also want to say that, um, that the staff really go out of their way to, to help kids who struggle, you know? So I would imagine that, um, you know, that maybe the incidence of the file of grievance for them might be lower, because I think the staff is pretty good about it. And, yeah, well, definitely.
I think for rape and assault, especially, imagine for younger children, they would need a specific professional to be able to handle that, you know, for kids. It's a simple choice, what has happened to that?
Yeah.
Point of information.
Yes.
I'm, I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense to hear from the chief?
Yes.
While he can be here, because by the time we all go around, there may be no time left and I think it's important.
Yes.
That we hear what he has to say.
Good point.
Um, I think that's a good point, then why don't we do that?
Thank you.
Chief Keane, I believe you already have the, you're on the panel, so you can speak and it looks like you're off mute, so, um, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, um, you know, there's a lot to take in, in this space and, um, you know, we remain committed to ensuring that the recommendations that are put forth by this commission, we work with you to try to implement those things that obviously are required by the law and that frankly make good sense towards supportive rehabilitation. And so I'll say that kind of to start, but, you know, I live in a very technical world, where words matter. And when you kind of use phrases and you call people terms, or you say people are dual-status youth, or you say that people have been, um, deemed incompetent, those are not terms that you can just simply put out there without some type of factual backing to go along with it. My goal is always to be supportive of ensuring that we connect the dots in those things, so that we can actually trace down where the issues actually exist. It's difficult to speak in hypotheticals. It's difficult when you mix information that should be factual with hypotheticals, aspirational, and other terms that don't necessarily equate to you being able to really track down exactly where a situation comes from. And when other things are either inflated or not quite exactly as the law states they are, it makes a difference. It makes an impact, and most importantly for me, it makes a difference in what I can actually operationalize to do something about. So there are quite a few things that were brought up that just aren't quite right. And for the purpose of. And for the purpose of
Stuff, because I can't hear him.
Chief, uh, we're, we're just having a little trouble. We can hear you, but sometimes it fades a little. So maybe the mi- if the microphone could be closer, that would be great.
Yeah, I'm actually, you know, mobile right now. I wasn't able to be in a standing place. As I said earlier, I had training today. So I'm in a difficult space, but I'll just say that words matter. That me from an implementation perspective, I need to know exactly the examples of situations so I can actually operate and do something with them. And it's not helpful in my opinion when you kind of say things that conflate issues or intertwine issues that aren't quite accurate. There are a number of things that were reported that I think frankly are not quite exactly accurate. They may be aspirational in their content. They may be desirable in their content, but what the law actually is is not factually what was represented in the report. So I'm not sure if they're probably better just to answer specific questions. I know I heard people say, hey, I had a question about that. You know, that's something that was said. That may be the more appropriate approach, but you know, I'll take for example, the Bill of Rights. As of November twenty-eighth, O Y C R had not completed what they're deeming the youth-friendly version of the Bill of Rights. We were given posters of the Bill of Rights for, you know, months ahead of time, but we were directed by O Y C R that, hey, we're going to come out with a version of this that you can actually provide to youth in a language they can understand. So until that point, post it, make it available, but don't really sit down with them and go over it because ultimately we're trying to produce something that will be relevant and understood. So the youth will be able to understand what's going on. That was as ever, that was as of November twenty-eighth. So we're not holding information back. It's not that we're not training staff, but at the behest of the people who helped create the legislation to create the Bill of Rights, we were asked to ensure that we put forth a youth-friendly version of it. That's what we've been waiting on. It has not been something that we're doing kind of on our own to somehow disadvantage young people. So that's kind of one thing. Secondly, the policy comment about that we were actively um, not uh, allowing people to have be have EMP that were out of county. What the law actually says is that that cannot be the sole criteria as to why you deny. It does not say legally that a person who is out of county will get EMP. That's not what the law says. What the law says and what the court needs is that when we produce a report, we cannot solely say to the court, John Keane can't get EMP because John Keane lives in Alameda County. Ultimately, what will happen is the court will make the determination based on a variety of factors. The court is now prohibited from determining that a person is eligible for EMP simply because of where they live. Nothing says in this law that in my report, I cannot say it will be a hardship to ask me to supervise John Keane and if he lives in Stockton or wherever else the case may be. The way the law is set up is that ideally, it is incumbent upon the court to try to do their best to transfer juvenile cases back to the, the county of residence. That's the goal that the court has. Now, while the court may choose for whatever for you in our county, that's not really for me to speak to. Those are judicial decisions and will always be judicial decisions. Our goal was always to inform the court when they asked, hey, can we supervise somebody from another county? Your honor, that will be a hardship. That will be tough for us to do. Nowhere any written policies do we have where we say if John Keane lives in Alameda County, deny EMP for him. What we have said simply is, your honor, that's a difficult hardship for us. That's not something we can readily, you know, do in a way that you may want it done. So if you're ordering multiple drug tests or other things that are going to be difficult to do, that would be kind of difficult for us if that happens. This issue around training. It was suggested in this report that we don't have a training log or that we have no idea what classes our staff are taking. Not only is that erroneous, but that would be illegal. We have state mandates that dictate how many hours per year that is mandated for staff to take. Not only do we know what classes they've taken, I know what classes they've taken their entire career. Myself, I've been in probation for twenty-seven years now. I have twenty-seven years worth of training records through multiple agencies to show what I've taken. The same is true for every individual employee that we have. While I respect the idea that, you know, we know best or we have ideas of what trainings would be helpful. The reality is, a good portion of what was in the list, we've already trained our staff on. The H R S has been very supportive in making sure that we have these additional trainings so that we can be informed. And that's the important part. When you work at a youth justice center or a collaborative space, everyone has their part. I am not building clinicians. I'm building G S officers or deputy probation officers. I'm not asking people to step into the roles of other folks. Yes, I can be aware, for example, that there are educational rights. But I think it's unrealistic to ask a group supervisor to be well-versed in every rule that applies to a space that they're not professionally responsible for. I think that we trust our folks to give us information. We trust them to direct us when there needs to be support. And we're always going to continue to do that. But I think it's one of those things where we have to be very careful in how we engage the relationships between spaces. The words matter, the way in which things are presented matter. And when to me, you, and not specifically saying you as the presenter, Ms. Raffelson, but anyone who puts together a report, when the edges kind of get tattered a little bit with just kind of just mixing of different things, frankly, it just makes it difficult to figure out what exactly are we being asked to implement? Or is this something where it's just simply pointing out all the faults or whatever the case may be in that, you know, there'll always be something else for you to do or it always be something that you're not quite doing right. Trust me, we take that burden very seriously. There's no finish line when it comes to this work. There's always an opportunity to be better. So continuous improvement is what we do and what we are about. And so with that, like I said, there are other things that were said that frankly um, just don't seem to jive. Um, I'm trying right now to discover what staff gave you the numbers around the um, the meals that actually worked for me. Because what I found very interesting is that I had never even seen those numbers myself. As a chief probation officer, I was not aware that those were the numbers. So the reality is, is that I'm really curious about that. So I'm tracking down on my end what probation employee provided you with that data that broke down those numbers. Because that numbers, those numbers when we just, but when we were told and were, were engaged by the county that this new kind of meal process was going on, I never was sat down, was given anything to say, here's what it's going to be per meal. This was a process that was done at a higher administrative level. So the idea to somehow, we are aware that we're spending whatever the number of per meal was that and somehow that's some statement of fiduciary irresponsibility, once again, is not accurate. Because that's just simply not how it's presented to us. And then the last thing is the issue around the service model for the um, for the uh, contracts. I just want to remind everyone that the probation department does not operate um, outside of the normal county practices. So if there's going to be major county changes with regard to how we procure services, it'll be something that will impact all of us. I do not have the authority as the probation chief to decide that I'm going to purchase or implement contracts outside of normal county processes. So as many of you are aware, the county is taking a look at procurement overall. And at the end of that review, there probably will be some direction as to what we would do moving forward. But until that happens, that's not something where I can unilaterally decide that I'm going to make, you know, different changes with this, that, or the other. And just for the interest of time, I'll stop there and see if there's specific questions that I can answer uh, that kind of involve some of the things that are heard around the table, but but that's really it for me. I, I guess I said, I don't, don't have more.
Okay, I just, I was taking notes as you were speaking, chief. So um, starting from the beginning, dual system youth and incompetent youth, those are legal terms. Those are not terms that are just used like, applied by it, like conferences on it.
Miss, Ms. Raffelson, I've been in this work for many, many years. I know exactly what they mean. But I also know that when you say a person is incompetent to stand trial, that's after they've gone through an actual process to determine that they're incompetent. I'm here, I'm interested in knowing, how many of those processes, you know, have actually taken place?
I'm sorry, how many?
How many of those processes have actually taken place before they've been deemed to be incompetent? Where, where are you getting, where are you getting that they're incompetent from is my question?
Um, well, I've actually, um, am the educational rights holder and um, for some children. So um, I've actually that's how I know.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm just simply saying that there is a actual process for not only determining incompetence, but also the restoration of competency. That's not something that's within the space that from a probation perspective, you know, we're focusing on. And the thing with dual youth, I know exactly what the dual youth are, the two forty-one point ones. The reality is, we actually have those numbers. We work very closely with child welfare. We have an absolute idea of how many actually you are actually officially two forty-one point one kids.
So we, we requested that information and we didn't receive it. So that would be why. And I believe Tony Burchins is the contact for the information. And um, I do take exception about um, that we, we just point out everything that's wrong because I go out of my way to recognize staff, not only when I see them, but in this report, to name them by name, to acknowledge all the positive work they do. So I do not believe that this report is um, a vehicle to just point out what's wrong. I think we're trying to rehabilitate children. I think that the system is changing and that we need to do things differently. Um, and so I'm sorry that you feel as though it's, it's um, it, the purpose of it is to sort of discredit the probation department because uh, that isn't it at all. Um, and then as far as the training log, that was not something that was presented, presented to us when we were there and there wasn't
It wouldn't be, ma'am. That's, it wouldn't be. Those are, those are personnel records. That's not something in your preview. That's not something we would just give you open access to.
So if your staff says they're not trained and you say they're trained, how, what am I supposed to do with that information, chief? I mean, I'm not, I mean, what am I supposed to do with that? How am I supposed to report that out?
Well, from my understanding, my, my senior team inside the institution has offered uh, amendments to your pro, to your report, which you'd said you didn't want to take. So we would report it. Okay, well.
I haven't even sent them the report, chief. So how would
I guess we have, I guess we have, we have a difference of opinion when it comes to that because a lot of the things that are inside this report, we attempted to provide information to you to actually correct the record on that. And so from what my understanding is from the folks that we work with, who worked with you, they sent you an email offering to give you corrections and you chose not to take those. So if that's
So they, we did work together on the Camp Camp because I did both inspections. And so maybe that, there's a discrepancy in which inspection report you're referring to, but there, we did work together to do the, implement the corrections that they suggested for Camp Camp. I have not had the time because of the holiday to even send them this report. So there's been no conversation about this report because I haven't even sent it to them.
So that's, but if that's the case then, but you felt comfortable producing the report and then reporting out on it without giving them an opportunity to respond if what you say is true.
So are you suggesting I'm not telling the truth?
What I'm suggesting is, is that you're, you're being intellectually inconsistent. That's what I'm suggesting. And then my point is, is that if, if you want to produce a report that's going to suggest and make recommendations for things, all I ask you to do is to be intellectually consistent. That's all I'm asking.
Chief, I offered to meet with you to go over these questions um, during our last meeting recorded on YouTube. I
You offered, you offered to meet with me after the report was already done and out.
It was a draft. It was not done. It's changed significantly from last week. It was not, it's a work in process. Your folks were here. I asked if I could meet with them. You told me, no, they don't speak for you.
They do not. And that's why, and that's why I'm here today. And that's why I'm here today speaking for myself.
Thank you.
That's why I'm here today speaking for myself. Because I had a strong sense of what the report was going to say and what the things that I actually believe are counterintuitive to actually what happens. So, but my, my end goal is this, because I don't want to turn this into anything more negative than what it is. My end goal is this, is that the recommendations that are in this report that we can, you know, actually actualize and actually frankly, point back to of actually, things that are actually happening and youth that are already actually in a lot of the programming that's being said doesn't exist. My goal is around the things that I know that we certainly can work together on to kind of fix or support. And so we're going to do that. It's not my ask of you to be very public and open with you. It's not my ask of you to change your report. You're free to write your report the way you choose to. Um, but at the end of the day, there's just things in that report that I'm not quite sure how we would actually fix something that actually is not there. But the report is fine. It's, it's yours. It's your report to produce and say what you want. So I'll work with what I need to work with. I'll work with O Y C R as I continue to work with. I'll continue to be, make sure I make myself aware of legislative changes that are happening, regulatory changes that are happening that impact our space. And we'll, we'll continue to endeavor to do the work of supporting young people.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you uh, for your presentation and for your, your report, Joanna. It was very thorough. Um, one of the questions I have, and I've asked Ms. Clark in the past and she said, um, it was regarding strip searches. Can you, can, can you provide a description of what that strip search policy looks like?
Well, as you know, we, as we reported out correctly, we have not done strip searches in our space in a very long time. Um, you know, do I know it by memory? No, but I can certainly get your copy of it and speak to it. Um, you know, from the actual policy itself. So I'm not going to, I don't want to, you know, miss anything here or try to free-form something that I don't have to commit it to memory. So.
Got it. Thank you. Uh, and so my follow-up question would be, they say that we haven't engaged in any strip searches uh, this year, which is a good thing. I'm curious to know when a youth is being processed, you know, for an accusation such of a, such as, as a violent crime and they're being processed through rese- uh, through R and Rs, I know it, but it can be reception. They have to be secured as they're being transitioned into a secure facility. That's why we refer to it as a secure facility. How do we ensure uh, that these kids are transitioning into your facility without a strip search? And is there cameras present uh, when that happens?
Yes, there are cameras in admissions. That's, that's what it's called in our space, in admissions, where young people, when they come in, um, those things are done in um, presence of those cameras. And there are things obviously that are going to be asked for the young person. Um, the young person would have been searched before they get brought into the space by the police officer, the arresting officer. And then as we transition them into the, their clothing from their other clothing, we'll, you know, pat their clothing down at that point. So that's, that's how we are trying to do our best to secure that quote-unquote, nothing of contraband or lack of safety is coming into the space.
So that's a strip search?
Actually, no, it's not.
Oh, it's not?
We're changed, no, that's not it. In my, in my professional opinion, that would not amount to a strip search.
Okay. Thank you. And, and then the other question is um, the camera footage and, and I'm glad that we have cameras here. Who secures the tape? How long is it secured for? And who has access to review those tapes? It's a three-pronged question. I apologize.
Yeah, so the, the, so they are secure. They are actually secured on a digital server. Uh, we keep those uh, for a minimum of a year. Uh, what we try to do is, is based on kind of the needs of the organization. We work very closely with the county uh, to create, there's a policy around the, the keeping of certain types of records and things of that nature. Who has access to that? Uh, one, our supervisor level people can have access to that to review it. And then executive level folks, we review it um, in conjunction with specific things that we need to research or search out.
Got it. And uh, the other question I have is almost around the same area. I mentor youth who are on probation who are sometimes summoned down to the Y S E for a U A analysis, which is a urine analysis test. Do you know the policy on that? If a parent is present or uh, if that is on camera? I'll, I'll stop there. A urine analysis of test?
So I think what you're trying to ask then is when they go into the restroom to provide the So I think what you're trying to ask then is when they go into the restroom to provide the sample, uh, one, are we going with them or is a parent going with them? No, we're not stepping into that space. Uh, the parents typically don't support them in that space. Uh, we have, there's a all-in-one kind of cup system that they're utilizing. Um, and we bring them out and we actually go over the results with them at that point. We're looking at the final result at that point. But there's no exposure where they have to take their pants down or anything of that nature.
Great, great. And then, uh, lastly, uh, my profession, what I get paid for full-time is I'm a substance abuse specialist, my drug and alcohol counselor. I work with mental health, reentry, I do all of the above. And, and something that we know that is identified in A A and N A is that that is a fellowship. That is not a treatment model accepted as evidence-based. Um, and so I'm wondering if, if we have that same understanding, um, that the A A or N A that is provided, uh, should not be referenced as treatment for substance abuse. Uh, and I'll leave it at that. If, I just want to make sure we're on the same page with the A A.
We're absolutely on the same page.
Thank you.
Because ultimately what happens is there is education and then there's treatment. The reality though, is that the treatment program that we have for many years, as we've said multiple times, is no longer being offered by the provider. And so when we put the R P out this last time, uh, we didn't get any takers for that. And then the programs, the A A and N A programs that are, that are actually in the space, uh, when they're available are actually done by the local chapters of A A and A on a volunteer basis. And so before that, we'd had a couple of, uh, C B Os who were doing part of that work. But we also know too, that behavioral health is part of their global interventions. Will also have those kind of engagements with them around drug and alcohol as well. So while it's not a standalone program, I am confident that B H R S is actually addressing those issues along the way with the other things they have to do. But no, you're absolutely right. Treatment and education are two totally different things.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, going back to food, this is my last question. I will leave you, chief. Uh, the, going back to the food, the numbers, so the one point seven million dollars on, on food, I'm sure there's some sort of contract or memorandum of understanding. Uh, and you're saying that you have never seen that number or have never signed an M O U regarding those numbers that's.
No, what I'm saying is the overall amount, yes, that's something that is a global number that is a budget line between, uh, that we pay through the county system to the contractual health people who do the, the food service part through the sheriff's office. And as far as this breakdown of how much the cost per meal is and things of that nature, no. There is no document to my knowledge that actually had that information provided in such a way as it was said, you're going to now pay X amount per, uh, meal per kid for this. It was, it was told to me very many, I can't even remember exactly when, but probably at least, um, at this point, seven to eight years ago that, hey, we're transitioning to this new way of doing the food. Uh, we, the cooks that we have were actually correctional health employees. They weren't probation employees to begin with. Um, and then when we transitioned from Glenwood into that space, that contract transitioned as well. And then that's when we were told that there will be a new process for how food will come. And what we were asked to do as probation was to ensure that we purchase the ovens that go along with that process and that everything else will be taken care of through, um, the sheriff's office moving forward.
Great. Thank you. And then I just want to commend you also on acknowledging that or, uh, just a minute ago, you, you said that education was a right and I know education is separate from probation, but I'm really happy to hear that, uh, you, coming from you as a leader, uh, chief of the probation department, because we have uh, parents who sometimes are fined, are forced to take parental classes, sometimes even jailed, uh, if their kids are truant. And we know that, you know, our youth have an, a, a right to abstain from attending um, educational classes without any, uh, fallback on the probation department. But the fact that you acknowledge that education is a right, um, that should resonate with a lot of people. And thank you, uh, uh, for answering my questions today, chief.
Yeah, no, I mean, it absolutely, I need to say this. It absolutely is a right. Our department, along with, um, our partners have been, uh, on the leading edge of this conversation around education and pushing forward to secondary. And hopefully, um, higher levels of college education is something we believe in. Um, I think that our efforts around it have supported that. Now, there's things within the normal process of a juvenile hall that have to catch up to this space. Uh, I think that, um, that Ms. Raffston said an excellent point when she said that things were moving so fast that now everything in the system has to try to catch up to it. So for example, when a young person says, hey, I don't want to do large muscle movement. I want to spend time doing homework. The reality is that, um, the regulations that still govern a probation, a juvenile hall by the state say that that young person has to have large muscle movement.
Correct.
They don't get to opt out of that. And so what, so what may come off as the department's blocking a person's desire to further their education is really us being bound by state regulations to offer certain things throughout the day. My hope is, is with the help of Project Change and, uh, Mr. Jasso, we will be talking with many of the state educators around helping to influence the, the regulatory folks to understand that for some of our older young people who will be in the facility, probably this normal kind of, you know, A to Z structure inside of a juvenile hall probably needs to be amended. And I'll be the first person to support that for people who want to take, you know, classes and want to take full loads of, of education rather than maybe some of these more mundane kind of repetitive things that they have to do. But the reality is for right now, the state requires that I have to provide those things. I cannot unilaterally, as the chief say, I'm going to opt you out of all, everything else other than school because that's just what you want to go to. I don't get to do that because then the state will deem me as out of compliance.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Commissioner Bookenegra, and, um, and thank you, Chief Keane, for, um, for being here to answer questions and to respond to the report. I think we were, we were going around the room, um, giving commissioners an opportunity to ask questions about the report. Um, and, uh, and now that we've, we've heard from you and you're here, Chief Keane, then, um, uh, if you're able to stay and answer other questions as, as we continue, um, that would be appreciated, but, um, we, we, uh, we understand, uh, i- if, if you can't, and we appreciate your time.
Yeah, unfortunately I can't stay much longer. So I mean, if there was maybe, you know, a question or two left, I could do that, but I really only have maybe about ten minutes tops, if that works.
Well, we will, what we'll do is we'll keep going around the room, uh, as we were, um, uh, C- Commissioner Mark Tony.
That's another question for.
Yeah. Fine, we'll go back. Commissioner Norrie, uh, has a question for you.
So, um, back to the food. I know you said that you, probation was notified from, uh, like the correctional food department that they were switching to, uh, what the program is now. Do you know if that one point seven million dollar number changed between the two food programs, I guess? Or if it was the same?
You know, I would have to research that. Um, I doubt it was the exact same. Uh, and I doubt that even that number that was originally back when we first started is the number you see today. I would imagine probably it's gone up some over time. Um, the reality is, is that a lot of what's baked into some of those numbers um, at a budgetary level are about the cost of the employees that are doing that. And so if salary and benefits increases, then the cost of doing certain, uh, functions will also increase. So without being able to say exactly, I would just say my professional sense would be that those numbers are different from what they were back then.
And do you have any, like, is, are there any plans to return to what the food service program was like before compared to, like, I think it was surrounded?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a county decision. I mean, that's a great question. That's not my personal decision because the, the hiring of the employees and everything else that would come along with that, that's a management and labor relations question. So that's not really in my preview to say.
Who, who should we go to, to advocate for that? In the county?
In what fashion, ma'am?
Well, you said it's, it's a, it's not, uh, yours to decide whether this be something we take to Mike Caligie with a request?
Who would decide?
Yeah.
I would say ultimately there'd be a conversation between, uh, the sheriff, the county exec and the county chief fiscal officer would be the people who would be the ones that would be informing me of what direction they want to take in that space.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So the, the, the chief said he had about 10 minutes left and before we return to going around the room for commissioners to ask questions about the report specifically, um, if there are commissioners who haven't had a chance to speak yet, um, who had questions for the chief, um, Commissioner Mila Hauk, I saw your hand up. Maybe you had a question for the chief specifically?
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Raffinson for this detailed report. And my question is, uh, I'm just taking from the report and the concerns of the parents. Um, it shows here that the visiting time was reduced. And I just wanted to know, is that true? And how much time is that reduced to considering that's a touch point for, um, you know, reunifying, reunification?
Um, yeah, you know, that's a great question. I'll be honest with you. That was the first I'd heard that time had been reduced. And I think also to around the same point around the kind of access to the phones. Uh, Mr. Has actually accurately reported that there are a lot of different factors in terms of who has phone calls now and who's been ordered, who gets allowed to come at different times and weekends and things. And so to be honest with you, I would really need to go and take a hard look at that and see if, you know, what is being offered today that wasn't, or excuse me, what was being offered in the past that's not being offered today? I know we have significant hopes of being able to increase engagement more so than decrease it. Uh, we have, um, some, uh, some technologies that will be coming forward that actually will allow more access for parents to their young people. Um, which we know, for example, we know the Zoom connections and things like that actually were very beneficial to parents. Uh, many of which are, are hardworking people who obviously will have difficult times breaking away to come up there. And so the tablets and access to that will be greater for the young people and we won't have to do um, some of the court orders and other things that right now, um, make it where it's inconsistent with who has this many visits versus who has this many calls. But specifically to your question, I really need to research that because I had not heard that we had diminished or reduced the amount of time that, uh, our parents were able to come and see, uh, see their, uh, their loved ones. But I, I'm committed to responding back to you and giving you that answer. Um, I just don't have it today.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my second question is around data collection. Yes, we all know that data drives dollars and that's how we can prove these, uh, systems that are working effectively. Is there anything in the pipeline that will be developed over time to share, share or measure the youth's progress?
So as you know, um, yes. So great question. So as you know, a lot of the data that we collect are state mandated data points. And so a lot of, uh, you know, specific to certain programs, they require different outcomes that we have to be able to report out on. And so we do have a sense of kind of where a person, uh, falls in the outlier of kind of with services they got and then what the ultimate outcomes will be. The difficult part about government and data is to be able to do a true comparison when it comes to like those longitudinal studies and things like that. Cause once a young person is out my system, I don't have access to be able to follow them. Once my jurisdiction is up, I can't follow them. So I can kind of, I can anecdotally come to a conclusion because maybe I don't see the young person represented in the system again, uh, or represented as an adult. I could theoretically count that as a success. But in a true kind of empirical measure, there's some real kind of, um, there's some weak points to that. So at the J J C C, uh, a few days ago, we do have an evaluation process. We had, um, our evaluation team from A S R produce a report. And so I highly recommend for those of you who weren't able to attend, that report is online now and it speaks to specifically your questions around successes and what programs are working really well. Uh, what programs are implementing certain aspects of evidence-based work more than others. And I think that's a great kind of, um, starting point to really analyze what's working and what's not. So I think between the data we, we produce to the state and our, um, our constant evaluation uh, through this evaluation group A S R, we have a good sense of kind of what's working, what's being effective. But when you, but when you get to success, and this is where I'm sorry, the, the data nerd in me comes out a little bit. When you get into the points of really successful things and what's really working, that's really hard to measure because in this state, we have not even defined, for example, what is considered to be youth success or truly um, youth kind of successful completion of probation or really what youth recidivism is. There are people who have ideas around it, but as far as a defined, this is, you count it this way. And so everyone from every county will count it this way. And then therefore we will have true apples to apples comparison. That doesn't really exist. There's a lot of people at the education level, at the university level that have ideas, but there are no universal standards, uh, at this point. So, but I would encourage you to, to go to the, uh, to the report, the evaluation report that was done as part of our local action plan that we do yearly. And there's some really good data in there that talks about the effectiveness of the programs.
Yeah, I mean, just to add on, uh, it, it would be super helpful. I, I'll take, I'll put my C B O hat on and just say that there is not enough data around restorative justice and alternative practices. And so e- even if it's just filling the pipeline with collecting data and partnering with, collect, partnering with C B Os who are actually doing a lot of the, the continuation of care work that, um, when they come out, um, that would be super helpful as well, just so that, um, there is an understanding of the, the, the linear, the continuum of care. But I, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Great point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mila Hauk. Um, uh, chief, I know you said you had about 10 minutes, about 10 minutes ago, so, um, we thank you for your time and, uh, for being at not just this meeting, but also last week's and giving us this opportunity to, uh, have this dialogue.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I do look forward to taking, uh, the report and being able to, to work on completing some of the recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, um, let's return to the, uh, going around the room, um, to be able to ask questions, uh, of the report. Commissioner McToney, you had the floor when, uh, Curtis Wolf made the suggestion that we go to Chief Keane.
Well, I thought the same thing happened tonight has happened.
I think that was a great idea and thank you and, uh, and thank you for raising that. Um, uh, did you have any other questions for, on the report, Commissioner McToney?
No, I have a lot of questions, but yeah, it seems really detailed. Thank you. It's like some great work you've done.
So then let's pass it on to Commissioner Sat McNory.
Yes, I thought it was a great report. You, only one question I kind of had was, um, do you see any movement happening on the food issue in the next year or like?
Well, I, I've gotten, um, some, some feedback from folks at the county and, um, they are interested in these numbers and they're interested in the quality of the food and they're, they want to do something about it. So I think that we are at a good point. I mean, it took three years, two years just to get this data and uh, quite frankly, when they handed me the packet of the, all the documents I requested, um, I was shocked that it was in there. I was really, I requested it, but I've never received it from the house. So I was thrilled to get it and it was provided. They did all the breakdowns. They did everything. Um, so I, I think there, I think we are at a better, we have a better chance now of actually making things than we did before because now we have more information. Before it's all assumption, right? Well, we just know it's not good and the kids don't like it and they're not eating it.
And, and we also know not to complain to Chief Keane. We know who to complain to. So that's.
Well, one thing you need to realize is the food has never been good.
Right.
Uh, practically every year for the last 11 years, I've eaten with the kids and I've seen what they throw out and I've seen what I won't eat that they serve. So.
Even before.
Even before the ones in the sheriff.
No, it's just totally inevitable. You know, so we're looking for a, a different solution. Yes.
I, I was a little bit confused. I thought he said that the cooks that they had were always employed by the sheriff. Is that, that's true?
He said.
It was county, the correctional health.
Yeah.
So even when they were, even.
But I think it was made on the facility. So it was not, they didn't have the same issues of the food congealing and then being reheated and, you know, it was, it was fresher.
Sorry, uh, Commissioner Norrie, did you?
You had a, maybe, maybe you had your hand raised, listen to something about what we just said.
Yeah, I was about to, it was just really.
Oh, yeah.
Let me notice when I was there, um, at, um, at Hill Crescent, and I think Camp Camp is that they have the Gusteau posters there. So yeah, my assumption is that a portion of, of the menu is like required to, 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 so they're actually having a big portion.
Yeah, so it does. So breakfast and lunch, they're really have to follow the federal and state school lunch program guidelines. Um, and they've been tightened up considerably, but dinner, because we've been, Melissa, I met with the, the staff there and, um, they said that dinner is sort of like free calories, like they're more open to, to giving them different things. They, the county also. They, the county also receives subsidies for breakfast and lunch. So we may not even have that actual cost because not only do they give money per child per meal, but they also actually give food. Like eggs and cheese and bread and like, what do they, what do they call those commodity, what they, is it commodities? Yeah.
Grand slam.
Yeah, so, um. Yeah.
So that could also.
Right, right.
Commissioner Norrie, did you have any other questions?
Uh, I think that's, that was the only question that came up.
Commissioner Lou.
Okay, it looks like it's my turn. Let's go.
Okay, I'm ready, I'm ready.
With regard to the youth concerns about their course load. Uh, it seems like the four units is community college.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm wondering who makes the final decision there because.
Are we talking about high school students or?
College.
College, college.
Okay, college students, okay.
Uh, because obviously that's not the office of that anymore. So. I'm wondering with regard to reducing from four units to two units, what's the issue?
So my understanding was that, um, so it was four classes. So it was like 12 to 15 units, right? Um, so went from, some kids were taking up to five classes. And then they were told that they needed to reduce the number of classes they were taking down to two. They were instructed by staff because of staffing limitations, limited access to the computers. That they didn't have time to, to fit all this in, that they'd have to reduce their course load. And that's where I took exception with it because their purpose of being there is, right? So, um, one of the children told me that, um, they enrolled in them anyway. And then another one said, well, I just did what they said. They said, don't take anymore. So I didn't register for anymore.
I think that's a O Y C R call.
Well, well, I recall, uh, when Melissa and, uh, Whitney and I toured the education component of, of Hill Crest. We met someone who was taking around three or four classes and he was able to do that, but he did. Echo something similar to what you're saying. So this is definitely something to look more deeply into. As for the exit survey, uh, you proposed having some sort of feedback when youth and parents transition out of the facility. From what I understand, there's no state mandate to do that, but it just seems like a nice thing to do.
It is. And when Monroe and I met with the chief, this was something we talked about and the chief was on board with it. He thought it was a good idea. Um, because it's a free way to capture data, right? And it, how do we know what families need unless we ask them, right? So I just think it's a really free and easy way to get data. And what are we missing?
Well, I, I recently visited, uh, the juvenile facility in Orlando, Orange County in Florida, which is. I think the third largest juvenile facility in the state of Florida. And even there, they, they are able to, to have some sort of exit survey or exit feedback. So this seems like something that, that we should prioritize in getting done.
Thank you. Our, our recommendations are on point. They're becoming law, right? I mean, they're becoming law. So I think they're on point.
Yeah. And finally, on recidivism data, I believe in our conversation with, uh, uh, Moni, Monae Wade. That, that he stated that probation is not able to track recidivism data. Because in, uh, once a youth leave probation, they aren't able to sort of follow up. So it'd be interesting to find a way to get the recidivism data for juvenile probation because I'm not sure if that.
I'd really like to explore, like poke around the edges of that with Peter Cruz. With, I mean, Stanford Law School, really try to understand that. The school says that as well. And anytime that is youth, that's kind, it becomes an excuse.
It, it seems like a lot of people are like, oh, we're, we're here, we work for this agency. It's outside our jurisdiction. So this might be a place where we play our voluntary advisory role and we call for broader sort of ability to do that.
What Chief Keen was also saying is that there's no common definition or set of criteria that would define. I don't know. I mean.
Well, we, I mean, even if you just proposed rearrest and, and when they leave the facility, a lot of them are on probation for considerable amount of time. So you can track what they're doing then when they're on probation and then you know when they're rearrested after that. Cause you have them in the system.
That data does exist and it's on the probation website. I think that, that what he was referring to and what Commissioner Haukta was also referring to is not just. It's not just recidivism data, but success data, right? Like the success of youth and how to measure that.
Yeah, those two aren't exactly.
Yeah.
They, they overlap, but they're slightly different.
So there is data on youth that end up back in the hall or back in the, uh, the justice system.
Yes, I don't think the criminal justice, I think, I don't think the adult justice system, just juvenile justice.
Well, we've had this year, we've had quite a few kids graduating to the adult system.
Yeah, and there must be some data on that because I've read statistics on that, that youth who have been detained are more likely to and they have statistics.
Rearrest is definitely something that is true.
And we need data on, on arrest data, just like you're saying, to know where are we going to pinpoint resources. Uh, are all the arrests coming from this neighborhood in San Bruno? Well, then guess what? We need to be working with the schools and we need to figure out how we can put some of the resources into that neighborhood. Without, without that data, how do we, we're just throwing it out there. Right? We want to make sure we're, we're steering it in the right direction and, and arrest data is going to tell us that. Like Paul and I know that in San Mateo, there's like a three block radius where half of the population of the hall lives, right? I mean.
That information should be in the local action plan because that's, when I worked on. One of the local action plans when I was on the J J C C, that was part of. How they decided where they were going to spend the, the money that they got from the state. Was on the areas that had the young people most likely to be arrested.
Is that, is that the? Yeah, these are for the local action.
Now, it, but that's, that goes from 2020 to 2025. That was, and that was.
Yeah, no, they start, it's.
The report that he, sorry, the report that he was referring to, I was at the J J C C meeting, is an annual report that is done to assess. The programs that are funded by J J C A and.
Right.
J C.
Grants, like spicy.
Yes.
Let's say grants.
Right. And that's.
So, so, and, and that is an annual report that is done. They just came out with the latest annual report. It's on the probation website.
Okay, so that's what he was asking.
Like assessing the, uh, progress of kids and the effectiveness of programs. Yeah. Commissioner Lou, sorry, uh, Commissioners, I want to keep this moving along since we're almost seven o'clock. Did you have any other questions on the report? Let's stay focused on the report.
That's it.
Yep. Commissioner Haukta? Any other questions?
I have a lot to save, but.
We got 20 minutes.
No, I just, I, I, how do, how do we create some solutions? I'm like, I, I just, I just need to know what, what do I need to do? Cause I mean, uh, the real talk, these kids are my family. They're, they're coming out and like literally stopping at Mama Dee's house. Right after they get out of jail or before they get into court or Eugene Jackson's house. So it's real life for me and I'm trying to figure out, you know. What can I do in terms of my organization? To bring forth some of these restorative, uh, methods that we haven't been proved that it's not. Research and systems based and all that jargon. We have data around it. But we know, I know that the pipeline has happened from juvenile hall. And it's starting in the schools. I'm like at middle schools and these halls. So like it's literally have all the behavior and the activities are happening. Right now.
Same as suburb city, same with all the top five cities, it's happened.
So I'm all about prevention. This is cheaper. So how can we prevent them to get in the year? But if they are in here. What are some restorative practices and organizations that are here that we can tap into to help? Reunite them with their families. The family unit has to stay together. Like how do we, if they're going to reduce the time, then what? They're not going to see their kids until they get, get them up? And then they have to talk about the restorative and, you know, what, what's the plan and, you know, all of that stuff. I'm not for that because it's going to land right on my lap. And then I'm going to have to help them do the action plan. If we can help empower the families in while they're there. Can we create some more touch points for families to get into the hall? And have these conversations before they get out. That's all I'm saying. Do not reduce the time. And if anything, increase it. They need to hear their parents' voice. That's all I gotta say. I mean, that's what Mama Dee was saying. I know she would say that.
You should be on the transition project.
No.
Sign her up.
Commissioner Bookenegger, did you have any other questions on the report? Thank you.
Well, you know, I have a, a, a couple of questions because he said that 1.7 million dollar number is probably has gone up. Uh, since we came across it. So he said it's probably higher. Uh, and so, and just breaking it down, we have an average of what? 26 kids a month or so there? 1.7 million dollars and that number, he said is probably higher. And just breaking it down, $89.94 per breakfast. That's pretty high. $179.88 per lunch. Where we.
No, 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 no.
And that's for both meals.
That's for both.
Yeah.
Still, what are, where are we eating? Morton's Steakhouse?
I, I think you can't get hot hung up on those numbers, honestly. Like it is cost accounting where things are attributed to a budget line item. It's like a completely different way of thinking of costs than a normal, like pay for a specific thing.
Well, I think we have the.
Getting hung up.
No, no, they gave us the information.
But I think, I think before we get too hung up on it, my advice would be, I mean, the, the true issue here is the quality of the food. Does not serve the youth, does not serve the rehabilitative goals of the, of the youth in hall, period. That's that. The costs, who's paying for what, where, it seems shocking and it probably is too high regardless of what it is, but those numbers. I, I was an accounting major. I can tell you I did cost accounting and it is a different way of thinking of things. And it's a countywide, I think what Chief Keen was alluding to is, it's a countywide cost attribution that has many different factors in it. And if you look at that number, it's like, it's, it's speaking a different language than a normal accounting. It, it's not normal accounting. It's cost accounting.
I think another way, I think another way of viewing it is.
No fairness, I gotta respond to that, right? When we're getting hung up on numbers, that's all of our taxpayer dollars right here, right? And just let me finish. Let me finish. I know, well, it's not what you think because you, we don't have the answers to that yet right now either, right?
I think you will have the answers if you talk to the county secretary. That's all.
So until we get the answers, I think that we should be hung up on numbers because if we're averaging 26 kids per month. And at the end of the year, he's saying it's more than 1.7 million dollars of taxpayer money. That means those kids' families are also contributing to the, that poor quality meal. I think it's kind of important to figure out where the money is going. If it's not going to the quality of food that is poor. Then we have to know why we're paying these cooks that are warming up food so much money.
If there might also be.
Hang on, hang on, sorry. If, if, if you agree with the recommendation in the report that we should dig into this, then noted. And, and let's, let's like keep moving along so that people who have questions about the report can ask them. We don't have a motion on the floor yet about what to do with this report to approve or.
We still got to finish.
And so, and so that, that's what we're trying to get accomplished in, in this meeting. So in the time that we have left and. We'll, at this point, it seems like we'll surely go beyond 7:15. So that's, that's fine, but, but like, let's, let's stay focused on. What are we doing with this report and what questions do we have about the report? Please. Thanks. Sorry.
The other, the other part of the report is what do we do with the excess space? In the Y S C, right? Because now we have suddenly excess space, tremendous excess space in the Y S C. We have a wide open camp camp. And we don't have a detox center. We don't have a long-term inpatient drug and alcohol program. Uh, and so I believe that we should make a recommendation on space and I believe that we're going to take this to the board of supervisors. It's going to go there. Uh, and I believe that we should be advocating that that excess space be utilized. To fill the void of A A and N A that has been distributed consistently, uh, for several years now. Uh, recommendation upon recommendation. And in all fairness to the chief, he said that he, they put those R F Ps out there and people aren't able to deliver. Uh, but maybe we can make that a part of the Y S C services by making something permanent. There, uh, as Alameda has it, I believe Sa- Santa Clara has it. I think that we should have it as well.
So in the report, I, that's why I include like what is utilized and what's not utilized. And then I make the recommendation of what we need. What type of recommendation are you thinking we would need to put in there? Like I wouldn't know of a space to identify. So what, what are you thinking? What does the coverage of that look like?
I think that a detox center for sure. Hopefully it doesn't resemble Cherry Hill in Alameda County, which is prison-like. I'd like to see a detox center. Staffed with B H R S, uh, helping youth detox from the substance.
They take them to the, uh, general hospital.
To the general hospital?
They go to San Mateo County General.
And then where do they stabilize? After that, where do they go?
Then they're given medications and then they go back to the juvenile hall. And then they continue on that medications throughout, but they're, they go to the hospital because the withdrawals are so serious.
Right. So we're spending, uh, space in the hospital when other counties have facilities specifically for that.
Well, they, um. I don't know that we have so many, um, kids that, I mean, there's more and more that are happening. So I don't know that we, the numbers, um, about having that dedicated space for that. But I know that the opioid withdrawal policy and protocol requires that they go to the hospital because they are kids, right? So I, that might have something to do with it.
Okay, so.
So what was.
Can we recommend that a portion of Camp Camp, uh, be utilized for stabilization and detox? So that they don't have to return to a, a cage with their medication and they can, um, be stabilized in. A hospital-like environment that mirrors that. If we're going to send them to a hospital, maybe we should have our own hospital-like environment. Uh, that mirrors that so we can stabilize them and that'll have to depend on an outside hospital where people are going to for emergencies.
So. It's hard to, to imagine what that recommendation would look like because. I agree, our Camp Camp recommendation was to use that place as the place. That was the recommendation, hands down. And then we're talking about doing an educational space and how can we have them go there to detox? If they're not a residential program anymore, they're not even staffed. So how do we, how do we? How do we form this recommendation to?
Can I recommend that this might be something that we take up as a project next year?
We can look at it.
As opposed to having to put it in the inspection report now?
Yeah.
But I could add, uh, uh, something in the, um, under substance abuse treatment that there, we do need to do something about where the kids. Receive their withdrawal treatment. I mean, that's easy, one sentence. Right.
Do we need to? Uh, didn't you just describe that there, there is a procedure now that they get hospital care and then they're.
Right, but what we're saying is that, um, that's not sufficient. They just go back to their cells. So we would just say that we would just recommend that they look into a more therapeutic environment for children who are experiencing withdrawals. How does that sound?
Would that have been the boys camp? Yours?
No.
No, no. This would have to be.
For that, no.
But would that have been?
No.
Environment that would have been more therapeutically appropriate for the cell.
To my knowledge, we've never had, uh, so someplace like that. This would be a new.
Okay, Commissioner Bookenegger, did you have any other questions on the report?
I think that that would, that, that is the run of my questions for now.
Okay, thanks. And, uh, Commissioner Agarwal, you're next.
Oh, wow. Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Green.
None. See, look at that. Zip, zip.
Come back to me.
It's not on the reports specifically.
Okay.
Is, is anyone on this committee? Commissioner? Attuned to talking to Keen? And does it regularly? Meets once a month, something like.
Have anything like that?
Well, I'm happy to start that. I would love to do that.
I did as the chair in the last year was, um, one is that Paul and I were on a committee with Chief Keen. For reimagining juvenile hall. We had monthly meetings. Also, there are quarterly meetings of the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, um, which is another, another forum for being able to talk with Chief Keen. And I had also, as chair, reached out at the beginning of 2023 to, to, to suggest that we might have regular meetings.
Just so Steve knows, the, the chair of the J J D P C sits on the J J C C. So the chair automatically goes or the chair is delicate.
Yeah, and, and, um, and, uh, instead of, um, instead of. Having like a, just a regular monthly meeting on the book, one-on-one. What we agreed was that I could reach out if I needed to and, and request a meeting. And so. I do have email. I do have email correspondence with the chief sometimes. So, so, so I think it is the role of the chair to, to like have a dialogue with Chief Keen, and and so that's what I've tried to do through all these sort of forums in the, in the last year. But to your point, I, I mean, I think, if I hear you correctly, you're making the point that that dialogue with probation is useful and, and and more of it would be good.
Yes.
I, I, I also wanted to just, so my comment on the report was, for one thing, clearly, there are a lot of work went into this, and there's an incredible amount of information in the report, so thank you for, for like all the effort that you've been through. My, my, my concern was, was what was revealed when you and Chief Keen were talking about not having had time for probation to review the report and to, and to comment on the report. That, in my experience, has been kind of a normal part of our inspection processes is to, is to give the, the party that is inspected an opportunity to review and comment. And, and so, and so, again, we don't have a motion on the floor yet as to what to do with the report. But my recommendation would be that we don't, we don't have to rush this report to meet by the end of the year. There isn't a law that's telling us that if we don't do it.
I thought we had a deadline of December thirty-first.
We do, but deadlines are sometimes missed, and for good reason.
I'm not in support of that. We all came to this extra meeting tonight to get this done on time.
I, I, I'm, I'm just telling you my, my opinion, okay? I, I'm just, I'm just saying that, that I am not comfortable approving the report personally. I might be outvoted on the commission, but until, until we have, have been more of a chance to vet what's in it and to give probation an opportunity to, to review it, that seems fair to me. And, and so, that's all.
Politically wise, to me.
It also seems politically wise. I think that's another way to put it.
Well, and he said it was very crucial. When he heard him, all, all of Keen's commentary was, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be either changed, or when he responds officially, he's gonna say, this is horseshit, this is horseshit, in, in much nicer terms.
Yeah.
But that's what he's gonna say.
I think the problem comes in is that I have frequent conversations with probation staff. I think what happens is, is there's, there's, maybe he's not involved in the day-to-day thing, so when he reads this, he's surprised to learn things, and maybe there's a word that hits him the wrong way.
But that, that's not what I heard when you two were talking, like, the, the, what, what you said is that you haven't had a chance to send it to the probation staff that you worked with on the report.
Yes.
Not just him, but the staff that, that, that we commended in, in your presentation as being so helpful had not had a chance yet to review this report and to be able to respond to it, or to just, not just respond, but to say, I think this isn't quite right, and, you know, I would adjust this.
We had a whole last meeting, and I offered to meet with them.
And that was only a week ago, and, and this is a hundred and thirty-page report.
They, I thought they came to the meeting prepared, I thought they came to the meeting prepared to respond to like the individual within, like, made in the reports.
Again, I, I, what I'm saying is that, is that my process, and I think what has been the process of, of other inspection efforts, has been do your research, write the report, then send the draft of the report to the people that you work with, and give them an opportunity to send you feedback offline, not necessarily in the meeting. That, that's why I'm saying that I would be comfortable with waiting to approve the report. That's it. I'm, I'm, that, that's all I wanted to say. You know, I'll yield the floor to whoever else wants to make a motion or make comment.
I, this, that could take a while. Like you said, it's, it's a very extensive report, and obviously there are things that they came prepared to address last week, which I was under the impression that he was present today to address.
Yeah.
He pointed out some of the things last week that he pointed out again today. They've been contested, maybe there's disagreement, but how long does the community have to wait before we make a motion to adopt this? I have full confidence in our incoming chair that she did a great job on this, that she did it to the best of her ability with the information that was provided, and that I'm prepared to accept this with a reservation that it can be contested later on, and that we can take it up again. But for now, I have total confidence that our incoming chair put together a pretty fabulous report that I think everyone unanimously has agreed was well put together. And I believe that there has been two weeks present for the probation to contest it, and I think he did a pretty good job at contesting, contesting portions of it, and we may never agree on the totality of the report, because there's a missing OYCR component that he said that, hey, this thing has moved so quick with these reforms, we're still trying to catch up, right? And I agree with that completely, but that doesn't negate the fact that this report is well put together, that it has substance to it, and that as a commission, we unanimously agreed that this is a very well-drafted report. So on that basis, I would recommend that we file a motion that, to accept it with the reservation, with the, a reservation for future, you know, debate on portions of it that we may never really come to an agreement on. Yeah, so, that is my thing.
Just, just to clarify my statement, I, I'm not suggesting that we have to be in agreement or consensus for probation.
Right.
Just that we do them the favor of sending them the report offline, outside of meeting, so that they have an opportunity to absorb it and to respond.
I agree with that.
So I just want to be clear, and I second the motion, but I, I.
Sorry, just to clarify, couldn't you repeat the motion so we're all clear on it?
That we accept and that we adopt that this report is well-written, that it is factual, but with a reservation for the probation to be able to debate the portions that they may disagree with, and that we can either agree with them and make another motion to accept those amendments, or that we can disagree, agree to disagree, and still accept the report as we're accepting it today.
I'd like to offer a different, similar motion. I move that we accept this report provisionally, giving probation an opportunity to review and comment, and come back and, and consider their comments and possibly revise it. Sure, I just want to make a point that.
Sure, sorry. Commissioner Green seconded Commissioner Swope's motion. Does anyone, yeah.
Rule of order. Motion was made by Commissioner Buckenegger.
Yes.
And seconded by Commissioner Rasmussen. That motion needs to be withdrawn before Susan Swope can make her motion. So before we do that, remember we have to take public comment as well.
And I just want to make a point that all of the facts that were presented last time that were concerns of Chief Keen, I made those edits in that report. I updated that report to reflect their comments. I did that. And I'm prepared to withdraw the training law. We didn't see it, we asked for it, we didn't receive, see it. But I, to remove the part about requesting that they create one, and instead request that they find out what the discrepancy is. If they've done the training and the staff says they haven't, then to get to the discrepancy, but otherwise, I stand firm that my information is valid. It came from them, and it came from the staff, and it came from the kids. We're not going to agree on words, like, he didn't even like the term dual-system youth. So I, I don't know that, I have things to do. I, I've been working on these reports. I don't want to go into my Christmas, because I want to give them an opportunity. I mean, I'm happy to take an addendum on anything that's factually accurate, absolutely. And I worked hard to make even additional in this last week. And I don't think we can just keep carrying it forward, and so I would, I, I'm in support of Paul's motion.
At no point, just to clarify, at no point have you sent your draft to probation and said, this is the draft, I'm free to meet if you have any comments. You haven't?
Yes, I didn't send that to them. No, I did not. But it's publicly available. They had the last, right, right, right.
This, this draft is a new draft after last week's meeting.
But it's, it's publicly available, and he got the link to join us in the meeting, so I'm, it was there. I mean, it's publicly available.
Commissioner, how do you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, as a new commissioner, I need to understand a little bit about the process of how this is going back and forth, and the drafts, and like, how many times can they contest it or what have you, and then what, what, what's the end-all of the final? Do we go to the Board of Supervisors for all of these recommendations, like, what's the process of this? Because I'm really like, I, I really want to just say, yes, I agree, but what are they gonna say?
I actually don't believe we have a, well, actually, no, that's not true. Commissioner Rasmussen, you wrote some instructions for our guide, how to go through the inspection process. But I'll just tell you what my experience is, which I think is consistent with the guide, which is that we've done the research, we've written the report, and then you usually have gone back to the people that we interacted with during the research to say, here's our draft, we're planning on bringing this to the commission. Give them an opportunity to read it and give some, and get some comment. Did I hear you correctly on this? Did I accurately portray that? And then they can give us some feedback on it. Then we can finish the draft and bring it to the commission. That's usually the way it's going. And it just sounded like, in this case, because there was so much to cover and so much to get done at, at the end of the year, Commissioner Rasmussen didn't have the opportunity, didn't have the opportunities.
She had trouble, she had trouble doing the inspection.
Oh, several.
Both her inspection and my inspection were super not supported.
I'd call it BSCC to get.
And I did too.
Right, so, all, all reasons why you don't necessarily have to rush it to the end of the year, that was my only point, right? And, and because there is that additional step of going back to the people that you've worked with and saying, here's the draft.
So we didn't, we didn't send it to them last year either. I don't know if you did, but did you send yours to them?
Yes, right.
So I didn't last year either, because my mother died. Tomorrow's the one-year anniversary, so we're right on track with that, so I didn't do that last year. And quite frankly, I was thinking that I had a little bit more time to finish my report, and we, my mother and I were going back and forth. This will be this meeting, will it be next meeting? And so even if I would have sent it over, it still wouldn't have been enough time to.
Okay, so, so this is what, sorry, Commissioner, this is why we have the process of making motions, debating them, getting public comment on them, and then voting on them.
And the point of order would be, I didn't realize that was seconded, so my offering a separate one means you need to vote on that one, and if that one goes down, and you vote on.
So Commissioner Buckenegger made a motion, Commissioner Rasmussen seconded it, we should get public comment on that motion. So, Mr. Clerk, could you call for public comment on Commissioner Buckenegger's motion?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the public, this is a special meeting, so comments are limited to this item only. Please raise your hand in Zoom now, if you wish to comment. I have one hand raised from Pat Willard. Pat, you'll go first, followed by Clara Jekyll. Pat, well, you'll have two minutes, so please proceed.
Hi, thank you. One thing I wanted to say is, especially to your cost accounting member, that actually, the county probably runs on a fund accounting basis. I've, I'm not a funding counting expert, but I did a drill down into Redwood City's fund accounting system or, or data, and was able to figure out the cost per police officer. So you'd probably do likewise for the, for what is they have for funded for this, for the juvenile justice program. Another thing I wanted to just share is that, I know you talked about law books and that sort of thing. There's a Youth and Education Law Project at Stanford, which would help kids understand those law books, I'm sure. So I just want to share those two things. We, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Our last speaker will be Clara Jekyll, oh, and then another speaker. So Clara Jekyll, you have two minutes, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you so much. I just wanted to say that I think the report is really valuable, and one of the things that I think is good is that we don't have to stick to the bare minimum of what the law requires us to do for our youth. We want to prepare them to come back to their homes and their families and communities, and feel that they're valued and that they're set up to prosper and succeed. And, and so to that end, you know, the more that we can do, even if it's not the minimum, I think is, is worth pushing for. And, and so that's what I value about the report. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Clara. I'll make the last call for folks to raise your hand now. Okay, Incare, Inarcare?
Wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry, Inarcare SMC. So you'll have two minutes, so please proceed.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I got interrupted, and I just, this is a general comment. I missed the, anyway, just a general comment. This is Becca Keela. I'm the founder of Inarcare, and I'm sorry my camera's out, I'm having some difficulties here technically. I want to thank the commission for the hard work on this really extensive report and for your service, for all of your service. I want to start by saying I'm all about rehabilitation for these youths, and that's where my comments come from, and the, and Inarcare wants to support all those who support our kids, JJDPC, probation, BHRS, et cetera. I'm delighted with the progress that we've made since last year, and as the chief said, we always want to improve. To that end, I'm distressed that a number of items from last year's report continued to be unaddressed. As I keep saying, these youth will come back into our communities, and how do we want that to look? What, what can we do about the following things? At the top of my frustration list is the food service. How do we expect to rehabilitate youth for not fed healthy edible food? As well as this outrageous misuse of our taxes. I'm not gonna get into, anyway, it's outrageous. I would like to, I would like to see us initiate an audit. To understand the, the cost for the day-to-day food, so that we can terminate that current contract immediately and get fresh, healthy food. Let's get an audit. I don't know the answer to this, but we need long-term care and secure track programming. We don't want these kids going through a revolving door. We want them rehabilitated and able to stand on their own two feet and be contributing citizens when they return to our communities. Well, we need substance abuse treatment, support for the college students, implement the, the youth bill of rights, and training for the staff that they have asked for. Lastly, such simple things, it makes me crazy. There's absolutely no reason for them not to have ethically approved hygiene products, athletic shoes that don't ruin their feet, and picnic tables. Please, take the excess space issue that is so obvious and crazy and talk about another taxpayer craziness. Take that issue to the Board of Supervisors. Rehabilitation is, or should be, the point of these children's incarceration. The report needs to be addressed immediately, immediately. Please, please move forward with this. Truly, if we're truly rehabilitating these youths, let's move forward with this report. Please, again, take care of these youths. It's in our interest and theirs, and these kids deserve it, and so are taxpayers. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, our last speaker will be Ron Reyes. Ron, please proceed.
Yeah, thanks. My comment is not related to the motion, so I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I just related to the EMP portion of it for out-of-county youth.
Please go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that the second part of the law specifically authorizes the court to release a youth regardless whether EMP is available or not on home supervision. So what we heard today is the first part of it, but there's a second part to that law. So.
Thank you, Ron.
I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioners and members of the public, and of public comment, and did you want me to share the three comments that we received? We emailed.
Yeah, we did receive written comment ahead of time. I can believe one. I can believe one of the written comments might have come from Ms. Keeler, who already gave the verbal comment, I'm not sure, but...
Okay. I'm gonna just share my screen so we can all see comment. So one is from Nancy Goodman.
Thank you for the very thorough report. I'm concerned that seven items identified in last year's report still have not been addressed. Three are what I would call low-hanging fruit. Provide ethnically appropriate hygiene items. Someone could go to Target today and do that. Second, provide adequate athletic shoes. Someone could go to Foot Locker today. Instill outdoor picnic tables. The county must have staff who could do that, otherwise I'm sure we could get volunteers. The fourth is serious health and youth bill of right issues. Possible waste of taxpayer funds. Terminate the current food services contract. I'm just summarizing because it's longer than two hundred words. Two or more health issues that could be resolved in a way less than a year with intent and focus. Reduce the wait time to get eyeglasses. Increase dental services to price a month. The last is much more complex. I don't know what the timeline is, but it's critically important. Implement long-term and secure track programming. That's one of the comments. Share the second one now. That's one, I'm sure.
You didn't come back to me.
As you can see, I have read the draft, Youth Services Inspection Report, and immediate action is to remedy the matters of most urgent concern described below. Prepare fresh meals for the children on site. Devote multiple channels for informing staff, incarcerated children and their families about the youth bill of rights. Provide children with routine access to eye care. Allow youth attending college vocational. Supply longer-term YSC residents with decent footwear that does not harm their feet. All right, the last one, I think, said she might have spoken, but I'll try to share and see.
Actually, I think the third one we got was not from Ms. Keeler, so...
Okay. Elizabeth, my name is Elizabeth Rossi, I live in San Carlos. I care deeply about our county's youth and their well-being. Over the past year, I have learned about some of the county's juvenile justice system and issues. I have read your latest report and happy to see that a few times raised the previous report have been addressed. I hope in the next year, many of these lingering issues will be addressed, including appropriate toiletry, shoes, and food. I am alarmed at some of the issues raised in this report, particularly the staffing levels and training, and subsequent negative impact on our incarcerated youth. Thank you for all you do. So we have a motion on the floor, which is to accept the report as is, and then send it to the probation department, and if they make any edits whatsoever, bring it back to this commission as amended, and then the board will take another action.
Correct.
Seconded by Commissioner Rasmussen. So through the chair, I'll take the small vote.
Please.
Commissioner Lu.
Hi.
Commissioner Mayanori.
Hi.
Commissioner Huber Levy.
Hi.
Commissioner Monroe.
Hi.
Commissioner Boca Negra.
Hi.
Commissioner Denevero.
Hi.
Commissioner Grebe.
Nay.
Commissioner Muntani.
Aye.
Satwik Nori has left the meeting, so absent. Commissioner Rasmussen.
Aye.
Commissioner Singh is absent. Commissioner Swope.
As you've restated it, and it doesn't go on for three paragraphs, aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Swope. Commissioner Uhila Hata.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Nay.
Commissioner Labus.
Abstain.
Abstain. Motion says, with Commissioner Grebe, Wilson, passing a nay vote, and Commissioner Labus abstaining.
Thank you. So again, it's been a very long day for you, and we kept you over, so I'm sorry.
Motion passes. So Commissioner Swope, you had made a motion also that...
I was just trying to make it simpler.
Gotcha. So you don't need to...
Motion should be like a sentence or two, not three paragraphs.
Great. So the motion passes, and the motion was to approve the report, send to probation if they had edits or comments to incorporate those.
No, I didn't have...
Right.
I didn't officially say that I was adding it, but I did mention in conversation that I would make that adjustment to the training law in there, so I will do that. I mentioned I was going to make that adjustment, so that will be...
That sounds to me like it's within the scope of the motion as it was made to get the comments and edits from probation. Yeah.
So we can send it out on top, and then if we amend it, we can send out an amended copy.
Yeah. I think that that's fine.
I think that's also respectful of, yeah, Commissioner Rasmussen's time and doing this.
I appreciate it.
The time, holidays approaching and trying to balance a lot of responsibilities. So I do really want to say that I appreciate, I think we all appreciate all of the time and effort that Mia put into pulling this report together and all the discussions in the background that we need to create. Thank you. I think it's a great sign that probation is engaged.
I love it.
All right, Commissioners, that completes item B on our agenda. We did, I did put into the agenda, and we agreed at the beginning of the meeting, that there was an item four, and this was really just to create space to, if there are any announcements...
Spend more time together.
If there are any announcements to Commissioner Huber Levy, who is still the vice chair of membership, and Commissioner Rasmussen, our new incoming chair, if you all wanted to make any announcements about what's coming up in January for planning for 2024, or...
I just have a brief, I just have a brief one. I just wanted folks to, in preparation for the January meeting, if you could go into the Google Drive, I'll put it on the front, so when you go right it, you'll see it at the bottom. I try to keep things there that it's easy to find, you don't have to search. The list of roles, liaison roles, and community ambassadors, I'd like everybody to take a role this year, and so please have a chance to look it over, see if there's something that really interests you, and then when we meet in January, hopefully we can pull up that list and...
We're gonna put you all on the spot.
It's a wide-ranging list, everything from disabilities to education to law enforcement, so there's a spot for everything.
Oh, and you want, I think we were talking about people who are currently doing the role.
Yeah, if you still want to do it, if you're interested, if you're not...
Share about that. Right. Evaluate what's important moving forward.
So I'll drop in the current list of folks, and then I'll drop in who I know wants to do a certain thing, or who doesn't want to do it anymore, and then you can see what's available, and then you can go in an email so we have the link. But I don't think I can do that for the Brown Act, right? I guess.
Yes, you can. We'll talk about handling communication as the chair, but yes, you can send it as long as it's a one-way communication.
Okay.
Not the discussion.
Response.
Did you want to say anything else about...
Membership? Well, we are currently full, but we have pending resignation.
I'll be writing later.
Yes, so we will have one position open on the commission. We do have a potential commissioner who has applied, but introduced, Mr. Eugene Jackson.
And I wanted to announce also that I'm already stepping down as chair, but I'm planning to step down from the commission after our January meeting. So one of the things that happens at the January meeting is, the previous year's chair is supposed to deliver the annual report from the previous year, so I'll come to the January meeting to do that, but then I will free up another spot. Yes, drop the mic. Right, exactly. So we will have two open spots after the January meeting.
And before we end, I just want to say thank you for your service, Monroe. When we first started, we tore it up, man, like, seriously, we tore it up, and we're here today, and the people are here with us today because of the work that we started when you joined and I joined this commission. I'm gonna miss you, and I hope that that's not the end of your service for our youth.
It definitely won't be. I will continue to be CASA and working with kids on probation, but I'm also looking forward to getting involved in other issues in the county that affect youth, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boca Negra.
Yeah, thank you. You've been a very inclusive chair, and you gave everybody a voice and a space to express themselves, and I'm grateful for that.
Yeah.
You're very welcome.
Cats.
With the cats.
Good job with the cats, hurting the cats.
Hurting the cats. All right, that'll be your job next year, Commissioner Rasmussen. And with that, we're adjourned.